Row, Kyle, please.
I'm here. Mayor Connie Ball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst?
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham?
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting on April the 10th, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections or additions? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Next item, there is a proclamation, National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Is someone here representing them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You'll come up and hold your gear. Let me read this.
Yes, please.
Okay. National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, May the 10th, 2018. Partnering for Help and Hope focuses on the importance of integrating behavioral health and primary care for children, youth, and young adults with mental and/or substance use disorders. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of the city of Newport, Tennessee. And whereas the need of comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. And whereas the city of Newport, Tennessee, through its unique approach to serving children, youth, young adults, and young adults with mental health or substance use disorders, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, adults, and their families in our community. And now therefore, I am Connie Ball, do hereby proclaim May the 10th, 2018, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and call upon all citizens of Newport, Tennessee, and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on this day in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of Newport, the Newport, Tennessee, and the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, young adults, and mental health or substance use disorders, and their families. In witness whereof, I here and two set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Newport, Tennessee, the 10th day of May, 2018. Mayor Connie Ball.
Hold on, hold on. Connie, I'm making you look good, Connie. That's the best you've looked in a long time.
Thank you, ladies, for what y'all do. Next item is recognition of Cruz Against Cancer.
Mr. Nathan Mann, would you come up here, please?
When we speak, when we talk, we go for all of us, all of us, all of us printed together. But I was having a privilege of getting able to talk to you. I want to tell you first how much I appreciate all you do for everybody. I know that's a lot of work, and you're sacrificing a lot to get it done. And we appreciate you for it. And in the meantime, all of the other alums that come up here, and we're out there getting a picture of it. Nathan, I'd like to, this one for you, recognizing you for your work for it, and this is one for the hard-tempered free bros up in there. Later on, in the agenda, where it begins to be, both of you handle the crowd up there, and new business to sell, and Mr. Mann has suggested to us we may have a city park. We checked some people, and they didn't have any problems trying to work it out over there. How to go for a good kind of helmet raise so far?
This year was our largest year ever. This year alone, we've raised over $34,000. And that means that over the 10 years that we have hosted this event, the first five years at Sagebrush, outgrew that location, the next five years, close, where we are rapidly outgrowing that location. In the course of 10 years, we've raised over $189,000. And every penny of that goes back to local area cancer patients right here in Newport, Cott County, Jefferson County, and Sevier County. Celebrate Life Cancer Support Group helps with gas cards to get back and forth the treatment, utility bill payments, things of that nature. We've bought groceries, we've put ramps on homes, we've pummeled gated homes for bugs when need be. Basically, whatever a cancer patient's need, whatever the greatest need may be, that's what we try to focus on and address for them. We're a common grant team. We can help breast cancer patients outside the scope of Cott, Jefferson, and Sevier Counties. But for all other cancers and all other fundraising, we have to depend on events like Cruz Against Cancer. And so, we thank everyone in this room for your support over the years. And Vice Mayor Profit and Alderman Mayor, thank you so much for allowing us to be here and considering.
People's got a lot of problems and got a lot of concern whenever something slapped you in the face, like having cancer. It just takes a lot of pressure off the family. That's what you all do. You tell the rest of your people to be, but it's ours and all of them. You've been the main man for all of these. The rest of y'all, look here, please.
Well, I've already had one picture that made me look good. Now I'm going downhill.
You say it that way anyway.
Yeah, I've always been headed that way.
Yes, sir.
Mike, did you want to talk to that, or?
I just think it's important every year that we recognize our police officers. I just told him a minute ago I had to shake hands with all my other brothers from another mother. It's very important every year that we always remember this and never forget it. It's a dangerous time right now in law enforcement, and our law enforcement officers everywhere across the nation are at great risk. Just continue to keep them in your thoughts and prayers on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Matthew, you don't give a speech? You always talk twice a lot, so I... No, really, he didn't ever say anything, so.
Hold on a minute, Matthew. Chief, we got some new faces?
Well, we got one real new one back there in the back. Joshua Schultz, we just rehired him about 10 days ago. And everybody else, I believe, has been with us a while. Brandon Casti's there, he's one of our newer officers. And Brandon's over in the corner. Sergeant Cokely, Sergeant Benson, Deputy Chief Hudson, Sergeant Elliott, and Captain Higginbotham.
Just on behalf of the Police Department, I thank you all for even recognizing us. I send my guys emails, so we have mass email, and I guess it's not fair to do it to them, but about every day, we get a notice of another officer that is following in the line of duty. I even noticed the other day where one was trying to go home, a motorcycle officer, and was trying to go home and stopped ahead of a motorist, got out to push the vehicle out of the road, got off his bike, and the car came along, or vehicle came along, ran through his back, and pinned him under the vehicle he was trying to push, and his life was ended there. We know it's a risk every day. Alderman Hansel served with us here, and served a couple other agencies. We know that that's a risk, and we just truly appreciate y'all taking time to recognize us and bring knowledge to the people of this Memorial Day. And I will tell you that there's a memorial, law enforcement memorial ride at Bristol Motor Speedway this Saturday. And it's a motorcycle ride, and I've got several guys coming up from Knoxville that are going up. But everything that we raise goes directly to the Law Enforcement Falling Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. So, thank you all very much.
One thing I'd like to add to that, Mr. Schultz, one second, is I heard a lot of comments in town lately. You know, when you go to restaurants, when you go to motels and stuff, and people don't see all this stuff in the background that y'all do, and the people that runs these places talk about how efficient our police officers were, how you called them, and they were there within a split minute and all that. Just wanted to let you know that, what's being said outside, too, okay? Yes, sir.
Okay, next item on the proclamations is recognition of Street Public Works Week, May the 21st through 27th. Have I got anything to say concerning that?
Ben, you got anything?
We appreciate it, and I know all the guys up in Broad Street.
We appreciate the job y'all do, too, all of us do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
I always depend on Ben and his crew to take care of whatever's needed. Thank you all. Okay, next is a report from City Administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot on the agenda. One thing, you know, the last building that we are trying to rehabilitate on the city properties is the police station. And over the past two or three years, we've done a few little odds and ends trying to get things done down there, but it needs a lot of work, still needs a lot of work. And what I would like to do, you know, we've tried to get somebody to come in and kind of give us, when you put something out to bid, you've got to have specs to hand out. And we've tried to get somebody, one of the contractors to come in and draw us up some specs that we could put out, but you're kind of asking them to help out their competition. And they really don't want to do that, and I understand that. But we've kind of, you know, we've tried to move this thing along for a couple of years, and, you know, honestly, I'm kind of getting, running out of patience with it. And I'd like to get it moving and get it off the table. And so, I've checked around, and there is an architect by the name of Mike Smelter that's over in Pigeon Forge. Pigeon Forge has used him to rehabilitate some of their buildings, including a couple of fire stations, and he's drawn up the specs for them and to put it out to bid. And I just wanted to make you all aware, it doesn't require a vote, or I'd hate it on the agenda. But I just wanted to make you all aware that I am considering doing that, and if you all have, so if you all have any reservations about that, you can let me know, and we can talk about that, and we can move forward with it. But he said he would, instead of charging us, most of the time, they charge you by however much you, a percentage of what you spend. He said he'd just do it by the hour. He said that's how he did it for Pigeon Forge, and that way you come out cheaper on it. And like I say, I wanted to make y'all aware of it. It doesn't require a vote, but I like, you know, people talk about transparency. I like transparency, and instead of just going ahead and doing it and then telling you about it later, I didn't want to do it until I told you about it. And like I say, if y'all have any input or something, you can get ahold of me, but if I don't hear anything negative from you in the next week or so, I'm going to go ahead and hire him and try to get moving forward with that. And like I say, get that done, and so we can put it out to bid and get that project off the list. The other thing I've got, and I hesitated bringing this up because it's kind of an internal thing, and again, it doesn't have to, it's nothing that you all have to rule on, but again, it's just something to make you aware of. I have cracked down on the minority of employees that we have that abuse the sick leave policy. I've been trying for some time to try to get everybody to understand the value of holding on to your sick time. Some don't see it that way. The majority of our employees adhere to the policy, they're good about not abusing it, and I just don't feel like it's fair to them when you have a minority that tries to take advantage and beat the system and leaves the department shorthanded. And so, I, you know, I'm staying within the policy, but I'm cracking down on it. And I just, one of the employees that got confronted about it this week made the comment that he didn't understand why he or his department was being picked on, but it's not that. That's one reason I decided to bring it up in here. It's citywide. I'm not picking on an individual, I'm not picking on a department, but I'm just, you know, I'm just tired of trying to get people to quit abusing the policy, and I'm going to use the policy to crack down on it. And if somebody's sick and they need to be out, that's fine, but this calling in sick to go fishing, go camping, or just sit in the swing, and leaving other, leaving your, you know, your coworkers shorthanded, I'm just, I'm kind of over that. It's just, it's a pet peeve of mine, always has been. And so, I just wanted to make you aware of it, I wanted to make it public. I really don't like, normally, I don't like publicizing those kinds of things because they're not that big a deal, and it's an internal thing. But, you know, like I say, the comment was made that I'm just picking on individuals or departments, and I just publicly say, no, it's citywide, in case anybody wants to come to y'all grumbling about it, which I'll be surprised if they don't. But that's just, that's just the way it is. I'm just, I'm over it being abused, and I'm going to try to put a stop to it. And that's all I got.
You just do your job.
Well, I appreciate that, but there's always some that like to go over my head.
There's nobody way it's due.
But thank you. And I'm sorry to bother you with that. I, like I say, I was torn about bringing that up, but when they just kept talking about that, well, I'm singling people out, I'm not. It's just, they single themselves out when they get on my radar by abusing the policy, by being out of sick days and vacation days and everything this far into this now into the first week of May. So, thank you.
Did you want to say something to me about that?
No, I'll say it. Okay, you go ahead. I just wanted to say a couple of things in regards to these numbers, you police force. The numbers that, of cases, and I'm sure Mike tried to sit here and talk about it with him as well, the number of cases of you guys, this police force reacted to 1,359 calls last month. Those, excuse me, 1,259, 1,282, 1,098, 1,183. And I was just looking at the variety. You guys, you need to be standing up there and give you another standing ovation. Those numbers are staggering, in my opinion. Second of all, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but the way this new animal control center is working, you know, we were accused that we would have 200 or 300 animals right now in this animal control center. According to the numbers, the numbers are true, we've got 11 animals in there. Still wish that facility is in another location, but this thing is working like we all wanted it to work. And I hear great things of what you're doing, young lady out there as well. So, Lisa, and I wanted to bring that home as well. So, I appreciate it, and appreciate what's going on here in your office as well.
Thank you. One thing I'll throw out, though, it's related and unrelated, but we've been trying to find somebody, we've been wanting, we put it out to bid to paint that building, and nobody will bid on it. So, if you know anybody that can legally do business with us, did not just show up with a paintbrush and say, hey, I'll paint it. They've got to be licensed and insured, you know? But if you know anybody that wants to, we'd put a bid in on that, we'd appreciate it because we're not getting any bids.
I was going to volunteer the board, but I guess the last.
Sorry, y'all are qualified to do it.
Chief, what's the new, what's the speed limit going to be on this new Cosby Highway? How's that going to be working on a part of the county, some of the cities?
Right now, it's set 45 mile an hour all the way to Willen Springs. And that's, the highway patrol had that lowered. Of course, it is still partially a construction zone, but it's set at 45 mile an hour to Willen Springs right now.
And you think it'll stay there?
I'm assuming it will. That was the request of the highway patrol.
I'm concerned about that right there.
Yeah, I did, too.
The problem, I know for right now, is to reduce crashes, and more particularly, deep impact to the vehicles. So, that's, especially with the new four-lane road that seems like someone's making the superhighway and run interstate speeds.
Sure. There's a lot of factors that go into that, isn't there, the consideration of the speed limit?
It's not just, well, we set a speed, but it's based on crash numbers, traffic counts, also a number of injuries in driveways to and exits from the highway as well.
I've had some questions about that. 45 seems low in certain areas, but then again, when you get to the four-way intersections and Lanes Market, East Orange County, that I can understand the 45. But some people, I know Coach has as well, that receive some, how in the world could we, of course, they have this fear now, it's going to become a speed trap.
Yeah, that's what I...
So, I guess my response is, don't speed. But I just wanted to ask you, so it's TXP?
If we do our concentration, if we have deep impact crashes or multiple black crashes in an area, we do concentrate on the speeding portion in that area to reduce those.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, out of those about 1,200 calls, how many of them, calls you have to tell y'all we're doing a good job?
Very few.
It's usually the way it is. Okay, let's move to board appointments. Item A is consideration of reappointment to the Equalization Board, Ray Kiper, who indicated that he did want to be reappointed, so what's your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to reappoint Ray Kiper.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussions, or? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of appointment for City of Newport School Board to fill Charlotte Mem's appointment until the November election. Yes.
I just want to say a few words about that. Before Ms. Charlotte ever passed away, we'd had some discussions about this, and she asked if this might have filled her turn, and Mr. Dave Perriman's name brought up, and I talked to Mr. David, and he said he would try it and see if whether he liked it or not. And the other board members said they agreed with that, the superintendent agreed with it, and so I said, well, we'll try it, and you can find out whether you like it or not. So, at this time, we need to make a motion, I make a motion to accept David Perriman as a new school board member.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any other discussion?
No.
Yeah, any other nominations for that position?
No, thanks, sir.
Okay. Row, Kyle, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
I will vote yes, but I think a application process might have been more appropriate for this.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like for David and the other school board members, the school officials, come up and swear an oath.
Swear an oath? I don't have the paperwork to swear an oath.
She's got it.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say.
Okay.
Come on, Michael Brode, don't be bashy, you never have been. Mr. Olson? The school is fit for now.
Thank you. Come on.
In both, please. Some of both.
You'll read your right hand. You'll read after me. I, David Perriman?
I, David Perriman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution?
I will uphold the Constitution.
And the statutes of the United States of America?
And the statutes of the United States of America.
And of the state of Tennessee?
And of the state of Tennessee.
That as a school board member?
As a school board member.
Of the Newport City Board of Education?
And the Newport, as, of the Newport City Board of Education?
I will faithfully execute?
I will faithfully execute.
The office to which I have been appointed?
The office, to the office which I have been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll thank us later, David.
Hey, before you guys sit down, Mr. Brode, I want to brag on your son just a second. I'll say it on a, I'll be brief. Washburn didn't know it, but I went up to Washburn about three weeks ago to umpire a baseball game, and low and behold, Coch County was playing. I didn't show them where I was from or anything like that. Alex, Mike's son, class kid, and he reaffirmed that, and what he said, that nobody will, between me and him, though, now the world's going to know about it, but I thought it's good to brag about it. Alex hit a, I was out in the field umpiring between the, and there's only two umpires. I was out in the field behind the pitchers mound. Alex hit a scorcher, line drive to centerfield, and the boy from Washburn ran, ran, dove, caught the ball, and it fell out of his glove. And of course, Alex stumbled into second base there, and he went, God, dog. I said, what's wrong with you, dude? He said, I wish that boy had caught that one. He said, I'd hate to see him drop that. And he was serious about it. I said, Alex, that's not the way this thing works. He said, no, he said, if it was me, I wouldn't want somebody else to say the same thing. So, that was, that just drove home. That kid's got a good one. Nice kid. Congratulations.
He's got a great mom.
Got a great dad, too.
Thank you.
And y'all are a class program.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for all you did.
Thank you.
Might not thank us later, but...
Okay, the next item is the consideration of appointment for the Newport Housing Authority Board to fill the remainder term for Charlotte Mem's. And I have talked with Walter Coe at Newport Housing Authority, and he'd sent me a letter, and they have verbally and written submitted the name of Regina Thornton to serve the remaining term, a term of Charlotte Mem's. And I told him that would be fine with me, but I always like the board to confirm what I have done. So, I'll open the floor up to make a motion to confirm Regina Thornton to fill out Charlotte Mem's place on the Newport Housing Authority Board.
I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Thank you, guys. Okay, next, report from Tanner Preservation Alliance.
I have one for you.
Okay, thank you. There's no old business, go to new business. Item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2018-07, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2017-2018.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that budget amendment on the first reading?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2018-08, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And likewise, Mayor, that's ordinance 2018-08, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2017-2018 for Newport Grammar School.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve on first reading?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Anybody want, follow up a second, it's 25 minutes.
Mike, thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Item C is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2018-09, budget for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2018-09, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport, and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to approve the budget on the first reading?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd just like to interject one thing, if you don't mind, sir.
Oh, that's fine.
You know, this budget does include a 25 cent tax cut. I've had several people that have stopped me in various places around town and inquired about that. Is that really going to happen? Are you really going to do that? And that they'd believe it when they see it? And so, I just wanted to make it clear and that that is in the budget. There is a 25 cent tax cut in the budget, so now maybe they can see it and believe it.
That's what we told them to do when this thing came about. We promised them that to do it. I think the city sort of got on its feet now and thank to you and Ms. Tina there, it's done a real good job on budgeting money and watching what we're doing. We're getting our head above water now.
Yes, sir, thank you. We've eliminated the $600,000 a year tax anticipation note. We have reduced our debt ratio. We've not taken on debt. We've paid as we went and it's our goal to continue doing that.
I also want to say that this was our plan. Yeah, we, once again, we've got to thank the city taxpayers, which we're all, are those. That was our plan, but we've implemented it. We said, hopefully in four years, we can get rid of it. Can't get rid of all of it, but you're not being accused of, of course, he's going to do a tax vote, a tax reduction. It's election time. No, we're near the truth.
Now, we pledged, we said when we did this that we would try, we'd do it for three years and if it was any way possible, we would cut back. And we're doing exactly what we promised three years ago. It's not something we come up with at election time. It was a pledge. It was made when the tax increase was implemented. And this is just fulfilling a promise. And of course, people tell me that, well, you know, politicians never do what they say. Well, this group has done what they said. And so, like I say, I just wanted to throw that out there because I've been hit so many times with that, that they'd believe it when they see it. So, I wanted to make sure it got mentioned so people can see it and believe it.
I want to thank our news media, too. They've been a big help to us on getting the word out to people. We wanted to let you all know we appreciate it because the way you all do things makes our job easier. So, we want to tell you we appreciate the news media, too.
I think we've made history in 240-some odd years of taxation. I don't think I've ever heard a rollback anywhere, so good deal.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, I mean, guys, I am, it's been a good working with you all. I mean, it's my last term and it's just been a pleasure to see the city go forward and you all have took care of business that should have been took care of before and I really appreciate you all for that.
Appreciate you, too.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is discussion of political signs.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all recall, last meeting, we discussed that a little bit. I brought you up to speed on the problems we were having with political signs during And it seemed like four years ago, we had no problems and seems like we had nothing but problems this cycle. And so, the, I hadn't took a serious look at that because we hadn't had a problem with it in the previous cycle. And so, this time, when we started, when we started getting complaints and I read the ordinance, there were things in there that we had not been doing and basically made the ordinance unenforceable. And one of the big things was that in according to ordinance, you could only put a political sign up 30 days prior to the election and nobody had ever followed that. And if you're going to try to enforce part of the law, you have to enforce all of the law. And so, you know, we had people, when we were trying to enforce parts of the law, they were just trying to get them to comply, they'd tell us, "No," and there was nothing you can do about it. And I had a real problem with that. And so, I wanted to try to find a way to bring the ordinance up to date to where it would be applicable and fire to everybody, but at the same time, be enforceable to where we could at least control it and then get out of control. Mark Robinson did an excellent job of researching surrounding cities and getting copies of what they do. That's why I provided copies of that in your book. We went before the Planning Commission and let them look at everything, got input from them. And what I handed out to you before the meeting is the things that they have recommended and things that I had highlighted and had highlighted. I gave you the same thing I did them and had the same things highlighted. And I'd just like to read it to you and just for the record and then give you all an opportunity either tonight or, the Planning Commission wanted me to run this by you all. Now, this did not, let me make this clear, too. This did not have to go in front of the Planning Commission. I just chose to do that because I didn't want anybody to say, "Well, Fancher just come up with this law. We don't like it. He shouldn't have, you know, been able to just come up with it on his own." And, you know, and I could be a little biased at times on some things because, like I say, there's some things about the old one left a bad taste in my mouth. So, I wanted to get other people involved, you know, a lot of people, you know, good heads, business people, get their input on it to make sure that we had a very comprehensive ordinance that we could all live with and stand behind. And so, had a lot of good input from the Planning Commission. They were very gracious about talking about it and taking their time, but they did ask, some of them wanted me to come back with the final draft to let, just to let, because I had asked them for their opinion, to let them know what we had finally, what I was going to bring. So, that's why I don't have it on the agenda to be voted on tonight. We'll put it in ordinance form when we get ready to do that at the next meeting in June. But I'll read it, what we, what we come up with, working with the Planning Commission, and then you all will have time to look at it between, and then we'll get Terry to draw up the, I'm going to go back to the Planning Commission and we'll get Terry to draw up the ordinance. Political signs may not be put up prior to 90 days before the election day. Signs in residential areas shall not exceed four square feet. Signs in commercial areas shall not exceed 16 square feet. Signs must be placed a minimum of seven feet from the street and shall not be located in such a manner as to obstruct clear or free vision or cause hazards for pedestrians or vehicular traffic. No poles or stakes shall be driven into the ground at any intersection containing a traffic light. Candidates shall be held liable for any damage to underground circuits. No signs shall be placed upon or attached to any city on property except on election day near polling locations. All signs may be, must be removed within seven days after the election and prohibited signs may be removed at any time by an authorized employee of the City of Newport. Now, I took, every bit of that came in bits and pieces, some of it's still a part of our original one. But other bits, like I like that about the traffic light, the intersections, because there is a lot of underground wiring and circuitry there and if you short that out, then somebody's going to have to pay for it. And so, I, when I saw that, I think it was Greenville had that in theirs, I thought it was important to add that in. And like I say, part of it is already what we have on the books and some of it is things that we cherry picked from other cities and all of this come, was good with the Planning Commission. So, it'll give you time to think about it, look at it, and we can also, by publicizing it, give the public a chance if they like it or don't like it. But I'll have something that, after going back to the Planning Commission with whatever you all recommend, if there's any changes, and then I'll have something for you to vote on in June as far as getting a new ordinance in place that we can, that we can get behind and enforce and people can't tell us, we'll do what we want to do and there's nothing you can do about it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, James. Next item is consideration of mutual agreement between the City of Newport and Coch County for animal control.
Mayor, on that, that is a, has been recommended by TML, our insurance provider. You know, it's been our policy for some time that the county helps, the county animal control officer helps us and we've helped him. There's only one of him and, you know, we've tried, when he's on vacation or out of town, if something bad happens out in the county, we go out and try to help with it. We've tried to be, you know, a good neighbor and work with them. But the insurance said they would prefer that we have some kind of an interlocal agreement between the city and the county, showing that the county, that the city, that we're good with them going outside the county and the county's also good with them coming into the county. And that way, there can't be any kind of legality problem if something was to happen and it happened and the insurance got involved. We've looked at some of the mutilated agreements at the fire department, the one, and we've kind of patterned this after that. Mr. Hurst has looked over it and given it his seal of approval. And so, it will have to be, it has to be voted on by us and then also by the CLB, where we're going to get it on that and see where it goes from there. And of course, we've also sent a copy to the sheriff because our officers go out into the county under his authority also. So, we want everybody to be good with it and the insurance to be happy, but that's, we've been doing it for some time. We've never had a problem, but when the insurance reviewed it, they had some concerns about it and said that we needed to do this just to keep the lawyers happy.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the mutilated agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item F is consideration of hiring a firefighter.
We currently have two firefighters who have been deployed with the National Guard. That has put us shorthanded at the fire station. The one, we don't know how long for sure, it could be up to three years that he's gone. One's going to be gone up probably close to a year at least. And we would like to go ahead and hire the number one person on the list and get him to work to try to cover some of this shorthandiness. Now, you know, what, we have a person, a firefighter, that is going to meet mandatory retirement age first of the year and so technically, this guy would be filling his position. But he's still there, but because, but by the time that the National Guard guys come back, he will have retired. And so, it's not like, well, what are we going to do with him when they come back? We're going to have an opening at the beginning of next year and so this will, that will offset this hire at this time. And this will allow, because we're right now getting into vacation season when everybody's wanting, you know, summertime, everybody starts planning to go and do things with their families. And if we don't do something, they're going to be, they're going to start hitting some snags and being shorthanded. So, we'd like to, we'd like to try to go ahead and hire the number one guy and the chief has his name. I think it's also in your books, but that would be our recommendation.
Do we have a motion to, does this guy's truck ready?
Yes, sir.
No schooling? I mean, he's ready to go.
He's ready right now to get on, get on the truck and in fact, he's firefighter Josh Valentine is sitting back here.
Hey, Josh.
Sorry. Josh has already got his firefighter two certification. He's got his EMR, which is medical responder. He's got all that, so he's ready to go on the truck now.
I make a motion.
Do you have a motion?
Steve's making a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
Where's my previous experience?
Jefferson City. Josh can tell you more than I can about himself.
I worked for a year and a half part-time Jefferson City. I've been with, Danny's going through the fire department for a little over 10 years and been in the fire service for right around 10, 15 years.
I know Danny Teszles.
That's my hometown. That's my home place right now.
Appreciate you, Tim, but you're...
I have to say before, we had three, all three of them I'd like to have. We didn't have a bad choice, but Josh and actually the guy that was in second place, they both were already qualified as far as their certifications, so this seemed to be the right way to go.
That's what we did like, what you wanted to do.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Last item is consideration of the Cruz Against Cancer at the Newport City Park for next year.
Make a motion, we accept as written.
I'll say it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Any no's? I hear none. Last item is consideration of bids for the ADA borders for parks and rec. Tim.
Folks, before he talks, this is the guy in Johnson City on Saturday. I thought maybe security's going to have to come get him when they announced his son graduating. There was a loud bell amongst 4,000 people and it's the voice of one Tim Dogg rig. It wasn't really about the graduation, it was sitting there for three and a half hours in that stadium seat. Same way with Mr. Fancher there. His son also graduated and did his internship with ETSU, so we're proud of those two boys. Nathan, tell me the secret, how do you pass that without even having to say a word? So, you must have done your homework, eh?
It's our community.
Amen. Amen. We've got there, our borders for our playground, we've got 10 sites that we're going to improve at our city park that we have to have borders, we have to have ADA mulch, the borders hold it in, and we've got ramps. So, Little Tox is a company that we've dealt with in the past or still dealing with that has give us a price for our borders. And of course, it's not a state contract. You know, if it, if borders were under a state contract, we sure couldn't find them. We even tried to call Nashville to get some help on how to find it and if it's under a state contract. But this is over the allotment that we are allowed to spend, so we're looking at the NJPA, which is the National Joint Buying Association. So, this is one of those areas that where groups come together, they give us a price and that's where we can get our best deals for these borders. So, we're asking for permission to purchase these borders. These will attack the city park for our ADA standards, which is the American Disabilities Act.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? Bill Roque, please.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
For all you do, we see a lot of things. The people in this town gets out and sees what's going on, they know. Every department here, this kind of, my old alderman, have a good job of doing, everybody.
Those that got renovations at Newport Grammar School are spot on.
Well, it's, we had an alderman that requested that, thought it'd be a good idea that we'd do something with those. And of course, that was Jeff and what we found there really worked. But what we're, what you'll see in the next three weeks is, is the flowers and we need to make sure, I know James does it every year, make sure to talk to Ms. Fish. She purchased the flowers that we plant downtown on the bridges and the hanging baskets. And of course, we upgraded here at City Hall in the River Walk this year with some of our flowers that we've chosen. And so, in the next three weeks, Alvin says that, hey, you plant them one day and next thing you know, they're bushing over. He wants to know what the system is. And I tell him all the time that we didn't know what we were doing. We were, we were just, then we found out we were doing hydroponics. And if you look that up, it's where it's an elevated plant and you feed it a lot of fertilizer, then you flush it real good with water, so...
There's kids at school at Grove Park knows that.
I hope that wasn't recorded. But it's called hydroponics, so, but if you see Ms. Fish, thank her. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, last item, any comments from citizens? Yes, Carleen.
Mayor and Councilman, I wanted to alert you that on June the 15th, we observe Elder Abuse Awareness Day. That's a Friday and we would like to hold an event down at the Danny Webster's Memorial on that day at 11 o'clock. We'd like to invite you all to be there. It's going to be a purple bloom release. Purple is the official color for elder abuse nationwide, so we'd like, we'd like to also elder abuse nationwide. So, we'd like, we'd like to also put on the agenda for next, next month, a proclamation for Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
Where did you say that was again? I didn't.
Danny Webster.
Oh, I've got you now. I didn't hear you.
Yes. Also, wanted to remind you guys, I'm still collecting ads for my directory. We're updating our directory here, and I haven't heard from.
What's your deadline?
Deadline is when I hit $10,000.
Okay.
And I'm halfway there, so.
Did we put one in?
You did last time, but I haven't heard this.
Did we do it individually, or was it a?
I, I think each one of you kicked in some amount of money.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, how much is, how much is that?
Well, the, the, there's three different sizes. A fourth of the ad is 250, half a page is 500, and a whole page is about.
I'll, I'll chip in 50, or whatever I need.
I'll chip in 50.
Okay.
I think, everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for what you did.
Yes. Any other comments? Do we have a motion adjourned?
Make a motion adjourned.
Do we have a second? Anybody against?
I see what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.